Awesome, thank you so much. Hey, everybody, welcome to the regular meeting of the Hollis School Board. This is August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We are meeting a week later than normal, so thanks for bearing with that schedule and also thanks for bearing with our tardiness today. This is all me. Got caught in that crazy storm, so hopefully those of you who are trying to watch this have my fine power. I just want to dive right in first before I actually dive in anything else. I just want to say welcome to Dot, our new assistant superintendent. Thank you for coming. This is our first meeting where we've been able to have him here, so thank you. We're going to start off with agenda adjustments, nominations, resignations, and correspondence.
Great. Agenda adjustments. I just want to make a change to our non-public. It says RSA ninety-one A three-two A and/or C, but I'm actually looking for D. A and/or C, D, but really, yeah, but really, D.
You just read out what was D?
D is consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which, if discussed in public, would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community. But I guess we also would want to go under for one moment.
I think C as well, right?
C as well. So C and D, how about that?
C and D?
Yeah, two matters.
You got it. And I may rely on you to read what that is again when you get to that point. I'm going to need you to read it exact.
Absolutely.
Girl, you got it. Thank you.
And then for correspondence, I just wanted to update the board on staffing and who we've hired over the summer. So we have hired Sarah Whitehouse at Hughes. She'll be point-five reading and point-three case manager for a point-eight FTE role, so about eighty percent. She has her bachelor's in English and Writing from Westfield State, a master's in elementary ed, and moderate disabilities from Leslie, an educational specialist in reading and literacy from Bay Path. We hired her at master's plus forty-five, step nine, for sixty thousand one hundred twenty-four, which is prorated at point eight. We have also added a kindergarten class, which I believe I notified you in July, but we've hired Catherine Bodett. We have, she has a bachelor's in early childhood education from Framingham State, so we hired her bachelor's step one for a salary of fifty thousand four hundred sixteen dollars. She's not new to us. She has been a para in our building, and she's also completed two long-term subs already with us, one of which was in kindergarten. So she's very familiar with kindergarten.
Perfect.
Right, for vacancies, we have in October through the end of the year maternity leave for kindergarten that we are looking to hire for.
When you say end of the year, you mean calendar year or school?
School year.
So from October through June?
Correct.
Okay.
We have an open school psych position at Hollis Primary. It's been vacant since two thousand twenty-three, but we do have contracted services in place, so we are fine, but you know that Buzzword contracted services.
Gina, do you have any thoughts about why that has been hard to fill?
There aren't enough school psychs anywhere for the year.
Many school psychologists can really kind of develop what they want for their work life, and a lot of them want to work remote, and many of them try to provide those services, and very few are really applying to schools. And their, and the school psych position is part of the collective bargaining agreement in Hollis, and so we did have a school psychologist who was interested, but they were able to get a job at Massachusetts or in another New Hampshire district where they're not in the CBA.
Which means there's greater flexibility with salary?
With salary.
All right. We also have a, we call it a two-twenty-one para. It just means that the para is on, has a notice of employment for two hundred twenty-one days, which is longer than the vast majority of our paras, and that's due to the program that they're part of. So there's a one-point-oh position at Hughes. We also need five special ed paras at Hughes. We are fully stocked with special ed paras at Hollis Primary, so that's huge. We are looking for a custodian that's split between HPS and Hughes. We are looking for part-time maintenance at Hughes and part-time food service worker at Hollis Primary.
Can we go back to the para needs?
Yes.
Specifically at Hughes, are these new paras that are needed? Or are they roles that were vacated and now we have to fill?
A little bit of both.
Do you want me to jump in? Yes, and I do believe that there was at least one hiring packet that got sent up today, so that might be now four and not five. So we're, and we're, and we're still interviewing, so it's not done yet. But some of them are, are new or got moved up, yes.
A new identification where they, they never-
Or, or they were new at HPS and we moved people, like there was shifts in, in some of the power educator.
Gotcha. And this is just for my education and maybe some others who don't realize this. If they have a para with them at HPS, does it travel with the child to Hughes in some instances? Or do they stay with the school and the children change?
It's very dependent on the need and whether the student still needs a power educator or whether or not it's, you know, you want to have students working with different adults. There's so many pieces with that.
Fair, fair answer. Fair and expected.
Yes.
But I was really curious. Anybody have any other questions for?
What was the maternity position that?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten.
Yeah, October through the end of the school year. Well, it says end of year and I-
Usually that means school.
Usually that means school year because one option is we could hire a one-year interim so that in September there's some overlap and allows the teacher and the new teacher to work together for a little bit before the, our fully contracted teacher goes on maternity leave.
Is that the objective?
I think our objective is to find someone. And so sometimes if we hire them earlier, it's a little bit more of an attractive position. It's, and to be honest, right now, folks are still looking for classroom teachers, so filling a maternity leave, no one's really applying for them yet because they're looking for a full-time position.
Makes sense, even though it's for a full year.
And the same thing with paras, you know, a lot of folks are looking for a teaching position, and then as we get really close to the, we're pretty close, but like, you know, like the day before, all of a sudden we'll see an increase in folks interested in the support staff positions.
I would imagine, obviously, the ideal is we get one person who comes in and stays the whole year, but of course it's long-term stuff. That person could potentially leave at any time should they choose to. Are we looking to maybe put in a strong para in that classroom who would maybe stay consistent to support whatever subs may or may not win?
So, to be honest, when we've hired long-term subs, they haven't left. Yeah, so I don't foresee that, if, you know, once we find someone, I don't foresee that happening. That being said, we did have to hire the additional kindergarten teacher that was not budgeted. This year, we do not have a contingency fund, so we don't have a source of money for that. We have regular ed paras that were in the budget years ago. It's not that we took them out of the budget, but the positions that are vacant sort of sometimes disappear over time. So they're not fully funded with today's dollars. So the likelihood of us being able to fund regular ed paras for kindergarten is slim, given that-
And, and we do need to fill the special education power educators first, yeah. As part of that, yeah, so that's always a piece, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Any other notes, Gina?
That'll do it.
Awesome, thank you. Now we're going to move on to the approval of minutes from June two thousand twenty-five. I will take a motion to accept as amended the minutes from the June third, two thousand twenty-five meeting with these amendments being offered. Page two, line thirty-four, insert principal, Hollis Primary School. Following parlay is Vicki. Page seventeen, line twenty-seven, replace current with currently. Page twenty, line twenty-one, delete is, following asking. Page twenty, line twenty-two, replace the period with a comma, following evaluation. And page twenty, line twenty-two, replace outlines with outlined. A second? Any discussion? Seeing none, take two of o, all those in favor? We have several sets of minutes. So we also had a non-public on June third, two thousand twenty-five. I will accept a motion to accept as presented those non-public school board minutes. A second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That same meeting contained a public hearing about our expendable trusts, so I will accept a motion to accept as presented the meeting minutes from the Hollis School Board Public Hearing Expendable Trusts on June third, two thousand twenty-five. A second? Discussion? All those in favor? Then we also had a special school board meeting on July second, two thousand twenty-five. Raffi, you weren't there, so you were attending to baby, so congratulations, by the way. So I would take a motion to accept as presented the special Hollis School Board meeting minutes from July second, two thousand twenty-five. So moved? A second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Four opposed, abstained? We also had a public hearing regarding the retained fund balance at that same meeting. I'll accept a motion to accept as presented the Hollis School Board Meeting Minutes for Public Hearing Retained Fund Balance on July second, two thousand twenty-five. A second?
Second.
Keeping it going.
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Four zero one. And I think this might be our last one. Yep, we have one more. I will accept a motion to accept as amended the Hollis School Board Public Hearing Special Ed Trust Fund Meeting Minutes from July second, two thousand twenty-five, with the following amendment of page one, line forty-nine, replace there will be with we will. A second? Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained? Four zero one. Nice work. Okay, and now I'm going to open public input. It is six-twenty. And even though there are no public members here, if they arrive in the next thirty minutes, we will allow them to speak, probably even if they arrive after that, seeing as there's a storm and some roads are closed, but just clearing it open at six-twenty. Moving ahead, we're going on to the principals' reports, starting with probably HPS.
Sure. All right, so we have new student orient, well, I'm just going to go through the exciting stuff. We have new student orientation at Hughes, nine-thirty AM on August eighteenth. We have new student orientation at HPS at eight AM for incoming kindergarten, nine AM for new students, grades one through three. Parents and students are both welcome, and that's on August twenty-first. New hire orientation is next Tuesday and Wednesday. That's for every new hire we have in our entire district, and that's at the high school. All of our teaching staff and para professionals return on August twenty-fifth. We start off the day, the entire SAU is at the high school and the auditorium for an opening. And then the students' first day of school is Thursday, the twenty-eighth, so that's always a very fun day. It's also a fun day to watch carpool and buses.
Maybe fun to watch, but-
Probably not to the end, yeah.
But we have been rocking and rolling in the buildings, making sure everything is ready to go. You can see down to this half of the room. The floors are beautifully shiny and sparkly, and the other half is our last to do. But that is where we manage all of our, you know, Chromebooks. You have to unenroll all the students and then re-enroll, clean them out, take in the new, unassign the old. We've been doing cabinet replacements. Our night locks that have been added for safety, we're not, we haven't started that yet. It takes a few things, like to get permission from the fire department, et cetera, so all of those pieces are done. But we also have added eight interactive flat panels up at Hughes, four from the budget, and then four from the PTA, so thank you very much for that. We are going to work on the stall partitions. That will be done before the start of the school year. Classroom flooring and gym flooring have all been refinished, so we're good to go. HPS?
Can I just ask a quick question before you move to HPS? The night locks, is that something that they can install once school starts or does it have to be done before?
No, those can be installed at any point. I think they were installed last November at the high school, so. After school. Lots of, many fun projects, night locks, gate replacement at the SAU field, door magnet holder stack, bathroom renovation. Some of those have been held up a little bit at the primary as the building maintenance supervisor shifted to the high school, and so we had to hire a new one, but we have one on staff, so we're excited to welcome him. We also had to move around a ton of classroom spaces and teachers. Our principal, our curriculum administrator, and our special ed administrator are now sharing what used to be like a teacher space with a laminator, so it's like a hallway with their three desks lined up. Not ideal space for sure, but they are doing everything to make the school able to open and run for students. So their offices have been taken over by special ed case managers to do services with students there as they had been in a classroom before, and that classroom has turned into a general ed classroom space.
And do these folks who are in the hallways have access to closed spaces if they need to have private conversations?
So they would have to have others be removed to have the private conversation? Or have access to a conference room if it's not booked? So, yeah, I mean, it'll be a little bit challenging every day, but they are in there working with a smile, so.
I'm sorry, Gina, can you say again, what are the three staff that had, what positions were they that were moved into the hallway?
The principal, the curriculum administrator, and the special ed administrator.
Got to see that set up today. And you're going to hear me talk a lot, and anybody who's listening or reading the minutes, they have really taken one for the team. They are working in a, what I mean, say is less than ideal is the understatement of the century. Situation so that our case managers can have a space to work with children. Even the spaces that they have right now are, again, not ideal, but the best that we can do, given the enrollment crisis that we are in right now, and it is a crisis, because we did not expect, according to NASDAQ projections, to have the numbers that we have this year. We didn't expect these numbers for at least another two years. We just talked about that today. And they made a lot of sacrifices to make sure that the children got classrooms.
Yeah, we've, we've been exceeding NASDAQ predictions for several years now, too. Yeah, for sure. For, because I know that some of the community members have asked this question. Are the specials teachers on cards at HPS?
Not all of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, so art still has the space, and music has a less-than-ideal space to herself, but.
It's technology that's on a card right now, if you're correct. All the others have classrooms as of now.
So-
Very much in science. Classroom.
Classroom. An outdoor space.
So do music change rooms? You've been very intimately involved.
I'm sorry.
Did music change rooms then from where it was originally?
Well, every year she's moved, but this year I think she's similar to where she was last year.
Okay.
Well, I feel like very appreciative to and sympathetic to our principal, the curriculum director, and tell me again that there was a special ed administrator-
Special ed administrator.
Administrator that is working in the hallway, not great, those are important roles.
Well, it's a hallway with doors.
Yeah.
So there's a, I mean, if one was in there, they, they could have some privacy, but, you know, kicking the others out, yeah.
Yeah. Is there anything there for us to think about in terms of, like, confidentiality of student data? Is that like anything that we're mindful of?
We are mindful of that, and like I said, so all those confidential conversations will take place by forcing the others out of the space if they couldn't be.
But it's not a hallway that people are, like, walking from?
No, no, it's, it's like a back room, sort of. It used to be a bathroom. It's in the back of the office, so you can get there if you go into the main office and then through the SRO space by the bathroom. There's a door. There's also a door from the hallway, and it's literally, it's like long enough for three desks to be lined up. It reminds me of an infirmary that maybe-
Yeah, objects.
So you walk to the first one, you get your temperature, you walk to the next.
It's also kind of like, you know, you, you feel like there should be like cubicles there, but then also that sounds like really scary, like, you know.
Like those shots in the old offices where desks were lined up in a grid?
Yeah.
Without cubicles.
Yes, you know, office space kind of has.
But to the point of the question to some extent, like, if, if the three of them are not there, the wing hallway can be secured so that any of the information's, okay?
Yes, correct, yeah, of course. And then, you know, as I already mentioned, enrollment continues to go up. I believe one form says our total enrollment's six ninety, and the other one says six eighty-six. I believe it's six ninety. And not only do we have a very large kindergarten class coming in, although we did have one withdraw, so. So we're currently down to eighty-eight, but I think we have one in transition right now, so back to eighty-nine after they're registered and placed in a class. We did have quite a few first graders register over the summer. We see that a lot. It doesn't put our first grade at a large space. That was a smaller, or in a large number, I should say. It was a smaller kindergarten class, but, you know, none of our numbers are really going down, so.
So to say, I'm sorry, six ninety for combined with the two schools?
Correct, yeah. Sorry, so that is the report. I will also share, just because it has to do with Hollis Primary and Hollis Upper, Monday and Tuesday, we had our SAU leadership retreat, so that included all of our administrators across the entire SAU. That was led by Dot Flaherty, and Lauren had special sessions with our school-based folks while we had worked with some of our larger leadership team, and I think it was a fantastic two days. We have a great team. They're very excited to get the year going, and, you know, they did some really good work on how they're going to open the year with their faculty and welcome the students in, so, great stuff.
Any other questions for Gina, our team, on the principals' reports?
Just one question on the addition of the kindergarten teachers. So the, the idea for removing contingency for that kind of thing for the budget was to try and bring down cost based on all the other costs that were coming in and stuff. Do you think going forward for the future for that kind of, do, do you think you would do that the same way for the future if it was kind of like similar, where we have like these other costs? It's just like that balance of, do you-
I think it, I think it is, would have to do with the conversations with the budget committee. They had concerns both on this, from what I remember, both on the school side and the town side, and so we wanted to be respectful of that. Of course, they were aware that the reason we have a contingency is for this exact situation. We haven't used it, so it's a little bit of gambling of sorts. And, you know, we're just going to start the year off a little bit tighter. I mean, knock on wood, it looks like we're going to need fewer contracted paras, so hopefully we won't be crunched on that end. But, you know, it's, it's a conversation, so when we come to January, if they're like, well, do we need a contingency? I don't know. We used, you know, we really could have used it this year. So I think it's definitely part of the conversation.
I don't know where it's going to fall on the disclosure side of things, but I would note as someone who's just come on to the board this year, I'd be curious if I was sitting in the audience at the next big school board meeting where we're talking about getting budgets and things approved, what we cut to get the kindergarten when we shrunk the general, because that always seems to come up.
Yep.
And so something you might want to keep in mind that, like,
Yeah.
Having a note that we can rely on to say, hey, yeah, so we had to do this, and when this thing came up, we had to be fiscally responsible and say, oh, okay.
Sure.
Because I think that's what some of the public is going to be looking for, is like-
Absolutely. And I wish there was a black and white answer for that.
Sure.
And as I mentioned earlier in the enrollment committee today, you know, we had a couple retirements. And so typically, you retire when you're at the top end of the salary. And then often, but not all the time, we hire at the less expensive end of the salary. So sometimes that balances out, and then it's, it, it's just a wash. I don't foresee it being a total wash this time, but my hope is that it becomes manageable. Another piece of this is, we don't know until, well, we know now, but we don't always know if someone's going to switch from single coverage in healthcare to two-person or family or the reverse. So sometimes we, even though health insurance costs may have gone up, we see savings just based on plan selection, also something that we do our best to budget for. But then now that we're dealing with an additional cost, sometimes that is able to help mitigate, you know, the impact on the budget. So it's not, I would, Donna would love if there was like, here's the number, and that's what we've got. And, you know, if everything was so perfect.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, we can speak, and, and that's what we do all the time with our revenue expense. We're seeing overages due to these general things. It's not the one invoice that just sent us over the top. So we try to do our best to have that conversation throughout the year, but it's not always as black and white as we would want.
I think all I was saying is like, since we're coming into the new year, my thought process was more the, okay, you and the people who are giving the inputs are going to be sitting there, and you're going to have these thoughts like, hmm, we're a little tight this year. Maybe I won't do this particular thing.
Yeah.
That isn't just in the wash, and I think noting that as it occurs will help us prep for-
Sure.
Going and talking to people about it.
Yeah, and what we typically do, and I hope we don't get there, but what we typically do is when we see the costs sort of settle and we see some of the encumbrances start, we put a freeze on the budget. Oop, we're not headed in the right direction. So if it, if you don't need it, need it today, you're not going to get it. We're going to freeze all of our expenditures for a little bit and then see what happens in a month or two months or whatever. And that, and we'll definitely let you know if and when that happens. It happened last year, certainly.
Moving on to our discussion portion of the program, let's start with the two thousand twenty-five LEA plan.
Okay, so you did have the LEA plan in the packet. This is the LEA plan, also known as the Special Education Policy and Procedures Manual, but it has, everything that is hyperlinked is printed. So everything is done by section, but all the hyperlinks are also the hard copies. So you'll see all the beautiful policies and all the work and all of the forms and all the different pieces that go along in our world, a little snapshot in the world of special education.
Lauren, where did they get the test?
Yes, so I'm planning on quizzing you, okay? I expected this to be read cover to cover, not missing even one bit. But just to highlight some things, so just so you understand why, you know, why and how this, this works. So this is a manual that's reviewed every year, that, you know, I take a look at it and we update different pieces. It's been a few years since there's been a major, major overhaul, and there's been, you know, some different pieces, you know, in, like, little things in various sections that we wanted to make this an overhaul. There's a policy that you're going to have brought forward tonight that is a, it's not a mandatory policy, but we wanted to bring it forward because I would love for the school boards just to have an awareness of this and understand how amendments are made and just be part of that process. A lot of it is law and procedure, but there are pieces of it that do pertain specifically to your district. So you'll see the programs specifically that are, that exist in your district. You'll see the policies and you'll see the, the forms and the different pieces that are specifically for our district versus the general overall procedure and plans. So if you're ever interested, take a look. This is housed at the SAU, because if anyone ever wants to come in and take a look at it, they're welcome to, but it is also on our website, and like I said, everything is, is hyperlinked. Everything that is a form or a document is printed in here. There are a few links to, to, to website pages. We didn't print those, but there are some references in the manual that are linked to websites. Anything that's a document or a manual is here.
If you're going on vacation, one of them-
Yeah, if you want a little light reading, get a little workout, it's all very good.
If it's more sunny, you'll have a big white square.
Yeah, exactly right, exactly right. So I just wanted to, you know, to see and to take a look. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you have any questions, anytime, you know, you know, after, as I'm sure you'll be studying it, please let me know.
Lauren, you were updating it this year. Were there particular areas that you were doing a lot of updates to?
Yeah, I mean, just kind of, so, and I, I really want to thank Christine Height, who's my assistant director, who really took on a lot of the nitty-gritty minutia of this, too, and she did an amazing job, just really cross-referencing every single bit. We went back to our eligibility forms, which we do review every few, few years, but we wanted to make sure that those were updated. We had those vetted by legal again. I think we last did that about two, two years ago. So there's just, we really wanted this to be as thorough as possible, you know, coming into this, into this year. So it wasn't, wasn't drastic changes, just kind of nitty-gritty things along, along the way that I've had different changes. And our, and our programs have changed. I changed the format of how I present them in the manual. It's much clearer, if you ever want to see the old one, I can show you the old one, but it's much clearer and it's much more detailed. So that was a piece that, you know, I felt was important because that, those are the pieces that pertain directly to our school, not just the state and federal law. So we made some changes like that, too, with the formatting, to make it kind of easier to read and more clear.
Thank you for doing that work.
Yeah, no, you're welcome. Thank you for taking a look at it.
Well, it's, it's very, it's a professional presentation. It presents well for our district and for you and for our entire staff that provides these services, so, thanks.
Thank you.
And now we look to Ann, enrollment committee update.
Well, you got some of it already.
We're sort of beating, we're sort of-
You got the highlights on, on our increased enrollment. If anybody who's paying attention, we, wondering what's going on with civil engineering and RFP- RFP was put out. End of, end of June, bids were accepted and the deadline was July fifteenth. We conducted interviews and the school board will be discussing the recommendations of the executive subcommittee this evening during non-public, as far as making a decision on who our civil engineering firm will be. The good news is, is that we continue to be well within and under budget from what we requested of the town in Warren Article Six in March. So that's good news. We did ask our facilities director to take a look at the Hollis Primary School Septic System. He had provided documents on the upper elementary school when we were looking at that third grade option, so we thought, you know, what's going on with the primary school? The Hughes Septic System is an eight thousand, eight thousand gallon tank, and that's a capacity for about five hundred students and staff. The Hollis Primary School Septic is only six thousand. And we are, you know.
What is that, number of people?
Well, I'm waiting on those. He's gonna send us the documents, so I don't have a specific number of people, but it's gonna be less than five hundred.
Right.
Based on what we're looking at as far as projections, we need that. So that's something that will be discussed, so putting that out there to the community. We will be getting that analyzed and assessed at one point. We'll be making some decisions on what to do there. So we appreciated getting that heads up. So some of that money that we're saving, that was budgeted for, for the pre-bond, you know, work, may, may go to that kind of an assessment and analysis because we really want to know now what we're going to need and what the situation is there. We also set all of our meeting dates for fiscal year twenty-six, so anyone who wants to know when the enrollment committee is meeting, it's the third Wednesday of the month now through February. Those are all scheduled. They are up on our website, and our website can be accessed through the Hollis Primary School site underneath Resources. It also can be accessed through the SAU forty-one site. So hopefully people will go and keep up to date who are interested.
Highly urge, highly recommend people stay up to date on this.
And I'll just add one little update. I, based on our committee meeting, I reached out to our architect and said, absolutely, the Septic was part of his plan once a design was decided upon. And then, because you don't want to design it here and then the building is, is right there, so.
Yes.
So that of, he said the size and the age, both of those meant that it was absolutely part of the scope of what he planned to tackle. And the other item was that maybe by mid-next week, we have some designs to look at.
Oh, well, that's very exciting. It's very exciting. Please keep me on those, on those emails. I would love to know about that. Yeah.
Anne, can I ask a specific question about NEZDEC projections?
Sure, I can pull those up too while we're talking. Go ahead.
So we are saying that we are consistently over for NEZDEC projections, and you can see that in a lot of years. That doesn't look like it's true for kindergarten, that kindergarten says the NEZDEC production was a hundred and that we have eighty-eight? Is that right?
I'm not sure if that is correct based on the 2025 NEZDEC, but let me, let me look that up now.
Yep.
So.
Can you spell NEZDEC?
N-E-S-D-E-C, the New England School Development Council. And.
And so what they do, Jonathan, is they, you maybe, they are the ones that are giving projections of this is how many students you, based off of housing numbers, based off of these other factors, they give a projection of like how many students we think are gonna have next year.
Sure, yeah.
I'm not sure why it says that on that document. So what I am looking at right here, it was predicted that there would be eighty-one students this year.
I figured that must be tight though, because we were so caught off guard by how many more kindergarteners.
Yeah, and actually, if you look at the one that we had the previous year, it was even lower.
Okay.
If, I think I have that as well, if you want to know it.
Yeah, sure.
From, so that's FY twenty-five, NEZDEC historical moment. Um, I, you know what? I don't have it on here. I may have taken it out so that I wouldn't confuse people.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
By any chance, do you have the FY twenty-four NEZDEC projections? I bet you I could.
I have the ones that, the spring update, April twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, so that's the kind that I have too. So we might, twenty-twenty-four, oh, never mind, got it. This was, is this that year?
If I was looking for a copy of that, is it a request or online?
It's posted.
It's, it's online, it's actually in the.
NEZDEC dot org.
Yeah.
So kindergarten, so in the spring update, it shows us at eighty-one for kindergarten.
So it's just a tick on this bar?
I'll find that and get that to you.
Yeah, of course.
Nora and I can report that out next week.
Unless they knew how we were trending and they decided to change their prediction.
Yeah.
We're gonna be correct next year.
And this was something, you know, like, if you, if you look back at all of these, we were just talking about this today when we were anticipating problems way back February twenty-twenty-four, when we first started meeting about this, we anticipated FY twenty-eight, we would need that extra classroom teacher and that extra kindergarten teacher, kindergarten classroom. And so that, that, that kind of caught us off-guard this year.
You're three years ahead of, we'd be expecting to meet that group.
Yeah, so, yeah, I said two, but yeah, you're right, it's three. Oh, no, it's two because this is actually FY twenty-six. So, yeah. Every year, we don't know what's going on.
This is, we don't need to be crossing this bridge right now, but something that we had talked about last year was actually how difficult it is to get portables, you know, that people, we sort of understandably assume that that's a relatively easy solution, you can just order a portable and get a portable.
Yeah.
And so I guess I just, I'm thinking about, and so now what I have learned is that it's not, I mean, there are other concerns about portables and security and all of that, very concerns, but I guess I'm wondering next year if we need another kindergarten, like, there isn't, I don't know that, like, we're getting to the point where, like, there's not another room to pull from, like, do we need, is that a thing we need to be thinking of in advance?
Well, I mean, this is what I had asked earlier, was about especially going on carts, which a couple of them still have rooms. So we said, you know, you don't, you don't want carts, but in a situation, that's amazing. It has to be kept on the table possibly.
Yeah.
It also, you know, the, the decision of, of how you proceed for the years in between all kind of also depends on how it is in March.
Yeah.
So if we are successful, there's still gonna be time on an HPS expansion. So knowing that it would be this amount of time instead of indefinite is always also helpful in making those decisions. Hope I didn't take your answer for it.
No, we talked about it in enrollment committees. Such an informative committee meeting. And Paula said, you know.
I'm sorry.
No, it was a good question. Paula said, well, you know, this is my short-term plan.
Yes.
Art can be on a cart, certainly not ideal, but that's a first-floor classroom.
Yeah.
So that's certainly one space that we would utilize. And then, you know, that might become the long-term solution if, if we can't move forward with the project, but, yeah, I mean, there's a lot to consider. And if we can't move forward with an expansion, then we'd probably look more toward portable options, but we have a long way between now and then.
What's the max remind me of, how many kindergartners we can have in a classroom?
According to policy or?
According to policy.
According to policy, eighteen.
Eighteen, okay, thank you.
And right now, with these six sections, we are at fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, 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 fifteen.
With one more to be placed.
Plus one.
Any other questions for enrollment committee? All right, keeping us rolling. Let's go first, well, you gave us our stuff.
I already gave you, I just gave you a.
Anything, anything else?
I don't think we've hired anyone since six, so. So I think we're good.
Perfect, okay. Our next discussion point, our board goals for FY twenty-seven. Do you want to kind of talk about these a little bit?
Sure, yeah. So, you know, although we already started budgeting for FY twenty-seven in June, it's a, it's a long conversation. And so in the summer, we look to see, do you have certain goals in mind? Do you have, you know, capital improvement projects that you have in the forefront of your mind that you would like us to focus on as a goal as we build our budget? Because we want to make sure our budget is in line with your goals as a board, so that we can all be on the same page as we move forward.
So the one that I'm gonna bring up is something that actually came out of the March Hollis Town Meeting, which was voted upon by our citizenry to have the Budget Committee form a Capital Expenditure Advisory Committee. And this would have representatives from Hollis School District and, is it the COOP and the Town and the Select Board and everything. So we formed by the Select Board, sorry, yes, not by the Budget Committee, but it would bring everybody together to kind of lay out all of their projects, because there are a lot of different efforts that are expensive, that are coming down the pike for all of these sources of cost, I'll call them. And so we need to identify a member who's going to serve on that committee. And I think hand in hand, you know, with doing that as part of this, like, our board goal is to make sure that that person can represent our interests. Now, for anybody who's curious, either at this table or watching the video, this advisory committee has absolutely zero authority toward any one of the participating organizations to say, no, our thing's more important than yours, you can't do that. We, as a board, still make all of the decisions for what we want to put forth at our district meeting and the decisions that we make as a policy board. This is more of just to make sure that we have a formal sharing of information, so we, each entity understands the impact of our decisions on the Hollis taxpayer. So I think kind of as a board goal is, and I think we kind of already do this, is we just make sure that this person is kind of given this information, so our, our board goal is to make sure that they have the proper information to go to these meetings and represent us. I have full faith in, in everybody in doing that. And I happened to have a conversation with Raf, and he's interested in, in participating in that way. I feel like that was a great idea because of him serving on the Budget Committee as our liaison, he's already there, he knows the best way to deliver the information, he also knows kind of the other conversation points that happen with the other entities. So I would like to take the opportunity to appoint Raf as our Capital Expenditure Advisory Committee if he's willing to do it. Thank you. And then that can be kind of tie into our goals. Like I said, it's something that'll start now, but it'll be something that's gonna continue, especially with our, our looming larger things that are gonna be hitting our board FY twenty-seven.
I think it's also noteworthy that Rafi is the alternate on the enrollment committee, and he's, he and I have constant communication about what's happening in enrollment, including what's happening at this meeting when I am formed, but also individually, we go back and forth. And I, as the alternate for the Budget Committee, I sometimes go and speak with him more when he's unable to attend. So I think that Rafi is, is a great choice for that. If you need an alternate, you'd be happy to be the backup if babysick happens, because we have so much communication.
Do we do an alternate for that, do you know?
It's brand new.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't discussed. I was about to ask that, which is, it, it's implied, but has the Select Board actually put together this committee?
Yes, they've asked me to appoint someone, and I said, we're not meeting until August, so I will not do it before then, because I wanted it to be part of the discussion.
And it was, it was totally implied by your lead-in, I just, I hadn't been paying attention to what the Select Board is doing, so.
Totally fine, yeah, they've been, they did form the committee, they've been getting the members from the other entities that are gonna participate. I think we might be the last ones, just because of the timing for it, which is fine. So, and then they will decide on when and how they meet based on the membership.
And assuming that COOP will also have a representative there?
They will, yeah.
And also just saying this for people who are maybe watching, that's one of the values of this board, is that then having this board allows us as a town to then be potentially looking at, when people are building, can we build into builders' expenses? You have to be, you know, contributing to expenses for roads or have the impact fees.
Impact fees for the school, so that's very important. Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it gives us a good, it sounds like I'm like cheering the committee on, but I think it gives us a, an absolute seat at the table to hear directly from those participants about what's going on versus us as individual taxpayers having to pay super close attention to every single Select Board and other meeting to glean the pieces that could be impactful to the work that we do here.
My one request Raf is that you like report back in the same way the enrollment committee reports back.
Yes.
Just because I would like to hear, you know.
Sure. That is an expectation for me as well.
Is the plan that they have monthly meetings?
Yeah, they haven't decided, again, it's gonna depend on the membership, if they do them day, night, Zoom, in-person, they're gonna be flexible about.
And there was discussion about setting an initial time limit of one year, but then I think that that shows, so it should be different.
So we will, we will see. So I'm assuming it will be perpetual to FY twenty-seven, thus, we see for the goals. Thinking about other goals, do you have examples? I was trying to pull up some examples of what we've had as goals of the past.
Personally, I think a huge goal of ours is to focus a lot of time and energy on our enrollment discussions and coming up with, you know, a, a proposal that can go forward to voters in March. That's hugely important. I think our district is in really great shape. Sometimes some of our other districts have felt that it was, you know, really important, let's say, to begin the conversation of how do you integrate a social worker into the school district? And that's how COOP ended up adding a social worker position to the budget and integrating it into, to the school. That was, that stemmed from a board goal, so.
So this is, this is the introduction of this, this isn't the, hey, we're gonna set all of them tonight.
Yeah.
So in past years, we discussed it in August, and we bring it back to the agenda in September to say, okay, here's what we think, this is what we're gonna kind of set more for.
Are these all budgetary goals exclusively?
Well, it doesn't necessarily budgetary goals, but most of the time, what we do has a cost to it. And, you know, so.
My thought from a policy perspective is that's something that we have been working on. This would not particularly be a budgetary goal, but it's trying to make our policies be more in alignment across, because we are a multi-district unit, multi-district, you know what I'm trying to say?
That made sense.
Great.
S A U. S A U, yes, you got it.
Multi-district S A U, thank you. And so there are places that maybe it notably makes sense for us to have a different policy. I'm not saying we should have to, but I do think it is to our benefit in a lot of ways when we can be cohesive with other, our other, you know.
I like that, because then, then the students and families have consistency as they move from the Hollis School District to COOP.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like that.
I think one thing as well that doesn't decide a budget and may not be a solvable problem, but I haven't, admittedly, I also have not attended the, closer to the end of year, end of calendar year fall zone meetings, when we get into budget discussions and things. But if they run similar to how the meetings I have been to so far as board member are, the public input component is low. And that isn't to say that shame on them for not doing it, but I'm trying to figure out, is it, is it the communication and visibility component? And is there an area of improvement for us to get better feedback from the public on a more regular basis? Because obviously that helps us, and it helps the public get what they want out of the school district as well. And doesn't delay us to a meeting where we're actually talking about budget proposals versus what the, the public might want to accomplish and what they're seeing going on, because there's five of us who have a particular point of view, but there's a big district, so.
Yeah.
Again, may not be achievable, but at least taking a retrospective look and saying, all right, is it something where we could be better about announcing it, or we could be better about, you know, bringing up topics that may help move them, that kind of thing?
Yeah, we've talked about this some in SAU governing board meetings too, and it's tricky, right? Is the short answer there? And also it does, I think everybody agrees, is there a better way to be communicating with people? Even if it's not like having, I, I think that sometimes people have felt like, you know, citizens not coming to meetings is in some ways a sign that people feel comfortable with what you're doing.
Sure.